Call the meeting to order. First order of business, I'd ask for a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
So moved by Tim.
Second.
Moved by Tim, seconded by Charlene. No.
Wendy, either one.
Yeah. All right, so I'll give Wendy that. All right, all in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Uh, Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. So we are in non-public? Thank you. Okay, we're, we're ready to start the meeting. We already called the meeting to order because we had to go into non-public prior to this, and we just came back at a non-public, so now this is the official start of our meeting. And, so first order of business, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before, before we start the meeting, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Dr. Caroline Arakelion right on the end here. Caroline is going to be our new superintendent as of July 1st, when Kathy's retirement takes effect. So welcome Caroline. Glad to have you. Okay, first order of business on the agenda is the selection of a chair and a vice chair for next, for this coming 12-month period. I entertain a motion for chair. I have your motion, Jack Winmerby, chair for the next year, please.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is seconded. Any additional nominations for chair? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
I entertain a motion now for vice chair for this next 12-month.
I move Jim Pittman as vice chair?
Move Jim Pittman. Any second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brody. Any additional nominations for vice chair? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Abstain.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye. Thank you very much, appreciate the support.
Congratulations.
And look for another successful year. Thank you. I've left in your folder the committee assignments. I know not everybody got on the committees that they initially asked for. I tried to put everyone on committees that I thought would work this year based on what's coming up budget-wise, building-wise, with the ESA funds and all of that out there. So academic affairs will be Charlene, Cybo, Tim Eldridge, Stephanie King, and Jim Pittman. Building and maintenance, Tim Eldridge, Brody Duches, Dr. Jim Manning, and Dana Streeter. Human resources will be Wendy Fenderson, Dr. Jim Manning, Dana Streeter, and myself. And on finance will be Brody Duches, Stephanie King, Jim Pittman, and myself on finance as well. And Kelly is our representative again from Willsington, so thank you. Any, if there's any concerns on this, or any interest in possibly changing positions, you know, let me know. I've thought a lot about fitting and what's coming up in this, this year. So, you know, if it's, if you're not on the committee, you'd like to be on this year, maybe next year, plus, let's see how it goes, okay? The next, next order of business is the school board ethics policy. I have the master form here in your packet with the school board ethics policy that everyone should have read through. And this is the time of the year that we all sign the policy and have it on file. I will start the file here, and we'll move it around the table and make sure everybody Just wait for, make sure everyone gets, wants to sign that and bring it back. In the meantime, agenda review.
Yes, I do have one thing to add, and it would be signing on as a friend of the court in the Verro Supreme, Verro Supreme Court case.
Is that an action item?
Not for tonight, but just an information discussion.
Okay. Here, Linda will take that, thank you. Okay, moving on to acceptance of minutes. The first one is, it's been a while, we're looking for acceptance for the December 6th, 2021 academic affairs committee meeting. Both members are here this tonight.
Hold on, whatever Ms. [inaudible].
Yes.
Are we gonna go over the agenda, the agenda review?
We just did.
Oh, we did? Sorry, I couldn't hear it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there anything that we added to the agenda?
Kathy added one thing to the agenda.
Might I know what it was?
It was the signing on a friend of a court, a friend of the court, not a case. Just informational. Okay, the, I entertain a motion for approving the academic affairs committee meeting from December 6th. The two people that were there at that meeting were Charlene and Tim.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's removed by Charlene, and seconded by Tim. Are you in favor of approving that? Signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye and aye, okay, thank you. Okay, the next, next minute, the approval of the academic affairs committee meeting on February 15th. Members present at that were Tim Eldridge and Stephanie King.
So moved.
All right, moved by Tim, seconded by Stephanie. Tim, you in favor?
Yep.
Stephanie? Okay.
And obviously I'm abstaining because I was at home with a breakthrough case of COVID-19.
Okay, so Charlene abstains, thank you. The next is the academic affairs meeting on February, on March 14th. Members present at that were Charlene and Stephanie.
So moved.
Moved by Stephanie, seconded by Charlene. All those in favor, Charlene?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And Tim?
I abstain, I was absent.
Oh, you, you were on the committee then too, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You weren't listed on my, sorry about that.
Oh, sorry.
And Tim, you're abstaining as well?
Tim and I were both not there.
Okay. All right, the next, next is the school board meeting on March 14th. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second, moved by Jim Pittman, seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, any errors, omissions, corrections on the school board minutes?
I heard one with teeny, teeny.
You did have a little one which I think got corrected. It was moved, it was moved instead of mute.
Mute, yep.
All right. All right, all those in favor then. Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
I abstain.
Abstain. Wendy?
Abstain.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay, and the manifest being approved tonight, the payroll manifest total 1,253,086.81 cents, and the payroll manifest total 1,202,619.79 cents, for a total manifest being signed of 3,055,706.60 cents.
So moved.
Moved by Tim? Seconded by?
Second.
Brody?
Second.
Brody has one. Okay, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay, time for public input. If you'd come up, I think the, come up and talk to the mics here, I guess?
Chair.
If anyone would like to speak. Okay, seeing no public input right now, public input at the end of the meeting as well. Fallon is not here tonight, but I think Kathy has Fallon's report.
I do have Fallon's report, actually, it's a very nice detailed report. She starts out with the New Hampshire Educational Theater Guild in conjunction with Kingswood Theater presented the State Theater Festival. It was hosted at the Art Center on April 2nd. And I will have more information on that at the end of the report because it turned out actually very, very well for Kingswood. Peer outreach, there is a peer outreach initiative that's being organized for April 18th to the 22nd called Kindness Counts Week. The students will have an opportunity to write down what kindness means to them and place it on a mural in the path. The students will be doing an after-school campus-wide cleanup and a kindness sidewalk talk blitz. There will also be a Take What You Need posters and shine cards with the idea of paying it forward with an act of kindness throughout the week as well. That's really great. The Lakes Region Technology Center culinary arts students are preparing for their state competition. The dining room is full until mid-April, and Level 2 students are getting ready to take the Serve Safe test in two weeks. In marketing education, 12 students qualified for the National DECA Conference. They will be traveling to Atlanta, Georgia to compete April 22nd to the 27th. The students also receive the Outstanding Chapter Award as well as the Thrive Level for Outstanding Chapter Campaigns. Students were also able to maintain the Gold Certification for the School-Based Enterprises. The social media marketing students are currently pursuing nationally recognized certifications in HubSpot Academy. The next topic at LRTC is the Work-Based Learning Program, and it's the capstone experience of career and technical education. Students who successfully complete two years of a CTE program have the opportunity to participate in an internship with a community partner in their area of study, gaining them school credit and also real-world experience, employer references, and insight into their future career path. With the restrictions lifted, there are more opportunities available for our students to get out into our community for real-world experiences. Construction trades, first-level students have almost completed a shed kit for New Durham Elementary School. They will be installing metal roofing tomorrow. Second-level students are working on their OSHA 10 certifications. For health and science technology, students will be traveling to compete in the HOSA State Leadership Conference tomorrow, and the students are halfway through their LNA clinics. In graphic design, students are starting to focus back on the yearbook. They got some good footage of winter sports events and winter carnival. They are always looking for more photos to add to the yearbook, which reminds me that all of you will need to have your photo taken too, maybe tonight's the night. EMT students are starting their field time. We all also will be beginning to review information for skill certification exams. Careers in education have enjoyed their new exciting unmasked interactions with the Magic Moments, which is the preschool, and carpenter students. They help Magic Moments classrooms celebrate their 100th day. Automotive technology students have been working on learning about brakes in the first level. Students in the second level stripped down a Cummings truck for parts, changed out ball joints, and stabilized our arms on the front end of a Nissan, and changed the head gasket on an O1 Jeep Cherokee. Computer technology students continue to work on their cybersecurity unit. A third-level WBL student, and I wish I could work, ah, Work-Based Learning, okay, continues to make a great impact in our community with his efforts and successes in that program. Precision manufacturing and construction trade students have a good handle on the Makers' Mill project. Some students are preparing to complete, compete in the Skills USA Sculpture and Welding Fabrication this coming week. Collision technology students are currently restoring a Honda Rebel 450. They finished the restoration on the Ford Explorer wheel, wheel, well, excuse me, with Bondo primer, sanding, paint, and finished with a gloss coat. Agricultural science, Mr. Gagny and LRTC were featured in the Timber Prior Winter 2022 Edition. The students are planting seeds for the Wolfboro Food pantry garden and their Mother's Day flowers. Multimedia students are continuing to produce the weekly Night Watch show as well as producing films for the New Hampshire High School Film Festival to come in April. Now for sports. All sporting, all spring sports have officially started, and the boys' lacrosse team is just, has just finished up a successful tournament this week at Hollis Brookline. Girls' lacrosse has their first scrimmage of the season against Guilford High School late this afternoon, which is why Fallon is not here. Boys tennis has their home opener against rivals of Kennett High School at 4:00 PM at Hollis Field. The National Honor Society, the National Honor Society finished off their last Kingswood and Kids on March 26th. Now they're working on a future car wash for fundraising that will take place when there is warmer weather. A scheduled school cleanup will take place on April 21st, right after school. There's a lot going on. Student council, student council is still continuing on planning prom and ordering all the decorations needed for the Mount Washington boat. And more news from the high school, the third quarter ends this Friday, and there's a reminder to get all work in by Friday. Prom tickets will now be available at all high school lunches, and the tickets will be around $60 apiece, and tickets can also be purchased in the attendance office. There's a little reminder here that if a student wants to go to the prom, and they need to have, they need to have their dues paid in full. Another reminder is that prom will be May 7th. The promenade will be held at 5:00 PM at Kate Park with the Art Center as a rain location. The Mount Washington will depart at 5:45 and return to the Dog at 10:00 PM. There are also free prom dresses available at the school that all students are welcome to come and browse and take, and there are some just gorgeous dresses that people have brought in. And the last piece is a follow-up on the theater festival. So I got a message from, from Scott this morning about how Kingswood did. This weekend, Kingswood Theater once again hosted the New Hampshire Educational Theater Guild State Festival. This was a fun and educational event that ho, that hosted performances from other schools around the state. Kingswood presented its production of the Yee Hee Ha Ha Review to an absolutely stunned and delighted audience. Normally at the state festivals, the adjudicators would select two schools to move into the New England Drama Festival, however, the New England Drama Council elected not to hold it this year due to COVID. So the board decided to have, not to have a selection of the top two shows. However, there was an award ceremony, and Kingswood did very well in the award ceremony. So I'll just go through, but Juliette, and please excuse me if I pronounce the names wrong, Bonnavee, All-Star Company Excellence in Acting. Austin Johnson, Alex Henderson, Aubrey Overall, Kaitlin Cooper, Charlotte Goethe, and Kay Baker, the All-Star Company Excellence in Music Performance. Devin Mugford, Mark Avery, Tegan Perkins, Gabriel Hibbert, Brody Fusco, Haley Lombardi, the All-Star Company Excellence in Technical Education. And we have a state champion, Devin Mugford, Sarah P. Bunkley Award for the Best Technical Achievement Design in the State of New Hampshire. So congratulations to all.
It was, wasn't it? She did a great job.
Okay, you're up Kathy.
All right, so the first item of my report is just to say how happy I am to be here at New Durham School. Things are just feeling so much more typical to be out in the schools again, and I'm really excited to see what Kelly has planned for us. She always plans something, she always plans something a little adventuresome, but, and always interesting.
Oh, well, you know, you were supposed to be in Brookfield tonight. You changed your mind, so. I came to the team and I said, all right, so what are we gonna talk about? And all of them claim that this is not in their wheelhouse, so. So I'm gonna do most of the talking. As you notice, I don't have children here, and that's because we are going to talk about our youngest students, our three-to-five-year-olds, and I want them to be home in bed. So Kelly and Linda, if you feel like people are staring at you, you might want to shift, you could come over to the front here. So, welcome so, to New Durham School, and welcome to our new superintendent. It's cool to have you here. This school year, of course, has certainly has challenges. We, as a school, lost a number of expert master teachers, some to retirement, some to transfers, so it was an uphill battle for us right from September on. We've had a multitude of staff and student absences. First, it was COVID, then we took our masks off, and now we have stomach bugs and flu and colds, so we have had some issues with that. We've had substitute shortages, as all the schools have, but I cannot say enough about our support staff. This lady right here, Mrs. Murray, is a key one because often, often, often I have to text someone at 7:45 in the morning and say, I don't have a sub for kindergarten, and she says, whatever you need, honey. Thank you, Mrs. Murray. We have about a third of our students, we have 156 students, so we're actually up, that are behind, about a third of our kids are behind in literacy or math. Pretty much everyone is behind in social, emotional, and behavioral skills. But through it all, this staff has really been a team, and we've all worked together. We are very excited that we're starting to see some more normal activities, like hosting the school board. Last Friday, we had our first Friday celebration, which is the first since March of 2020. The 6th grade did a beautiful job of hosting. Mrs. Craig Craft is here tonight. We're also looking forward to our spring field trips. Thank you for approving ecology school, the 6th grade is very excited. We will have kindergarten buddies, we'll have field day, we'll have a regular 6th grade promotion, so we are pretty happy about that. We're also currently hosting a spring book fair in the library. So tonight, we are gonna celebrate two different partnerships, and these partnerships have, are coming to a close, and that's why I thought it was timely for us to talk about them. The first has been through the Department of Ed and the Preschool Development Grant. After the law passed in August of 2018, and the text of the law is on the screen, the law says, "Instruction and support of kindergarten standards shall be engaging and shall foster children's development and learning in all domains, including physical, social, cognitive, and language. Educators shall create a learning environment that facilitates high-quality, child-directed experiences based upon early childhood best teaching practices and play-based learning that comprise movement, creative expression, exploration, socialization, and music. Educators shall develop literacy through guided reading and shall provide unstructured time for the discovery of each child's individual talents, abilities, and needs." So the first one is this play-based kindergarten movement, and I have to credit Casey Malo for getting us started. I remember meeting Katie Hills and Casey, and our representative from the Department of Ed that August of 2019, actually. And Casey brought in Sarah Creighton, who was working over at Tucktum Row School. She was the first to commit to incorporating play-based learning in our building. She also, over that three-year period, has been trying to bring others on board, our preschool teacher, our first-grade teacher. We had Lena Madden here, who taught kindergarten for one of those years, and she was also a part of the play-based cohort. Over that three-year period, they have each been observed multiple times during the year. They benefit from modeling and support from the Play-Based Learning PLC group. They meet with their coach, Karen Dubois-Gorafalo, I think she's coming this week, right? Maybe? They get feedback after each observation, and, and the grant also provided some free workshops to us throughout that three-year period. Casey, with her contacts in this area, also got a grant for $3,000 toward outdoor learning this past summer from the Four Winds Nature Institute. That's the money that we used to buy the shed that the Lakes Region Tech Center has assembled for us, and now we're just waiting for the ground to dry out a little bit. The idea is there are many toys and learning tools that the kindergarten will use outdoors, but we want them protected inside of a shed. So through that three-year period, even though it's been wrought with disruptions, these teachers have been committed to the work. They encourage, the PLC can, has continued to encourage them to figure out how we can develop a ripple effect throughout the greater community. And I know that Casey and Sarah and Alicia Hernandez have all benefited from this work. So we have some pictures that we're gonna show you as we go, and, sorry Christina. We do appreciate the support of the, of the district as well, so that they could attend workshops, so that we have been able to cover them. So play-based learning is intentional using questioning and reflection through guided play to facilitate learning. I think we may have jumped ahead a little bit, but that's okay. This is just play during literacy, or literacy during play. In kindergarten, students are supposed to print many upper and lowercase letters, they learn how to. They are exposed in a play-based learning environment to lots of materials, and you can see that the kids are spelling their names. It looks like, are those, who's an air rod? So they, and they develop creations during choice time, they label those creations with names, and, and then they, they share those creations and the labels with their classmates in museums. Sometimes they share them during morning meeting, I have seen that many times in Sarah Creighton's classroom. We can switch Christina. Here you see some kids, one of them is my grandson, he's actually inside, spelling all kinds of names, he must be brilliant. Children naturally learn play through play. As you know, if you have young children in your home, or you have grandchildren, they learn by play, they learn by engaging in and making sense of their world. Play-based learning is self-chosen, enjoyable, and process-oriented. The opportunities are child-directed and teacher-facilitated. In play-based learning, teachers take an active role as intentional planners, observers, and guides. Play-based learning maintains the joy of free play while allowing children to connect authentically with content. When children construct their learning with teachers and peers, they apply it in their own lives and make meaningful discoveries as they progress towards learning goals. We can keep going Christina. These are love bots, the kids made their own little robots, and then they wrote their own stories, well, gave their own stories orally, and the teachers transcribe them for them. We'll go to the next one, we've got a little video here. This is following the book.
What's the thing's doing on him?
And you saw it, it pushed it out.
So can you show a push on?
It's stuck in the mud again.
There you go.
They have, it pushes from the floor.
Uh, is the book Sheep in, Sheep Energy? I can't remember the title. Let's go back one Christina, I think, maybe, oh no, this is the right one, you're sorry, I'm sorry. Here's, kids are storytelling through play, building, they're building their vocabulary, their creativity. One of our standards in kindergarten is use words and phrases acquired through conversation, reading, and being read to, and responding to texts. So students build their own creations after reading certain texts. And in that push and pull thing from the sheep and the jeep, that's also one of their science standards, is to learn the difference between a push and a pull. What a fun way to learn! Uh, let's keep going Christina. Of course, we have play during math, we measure, we sort, we weigh, we play with materials. We describe measurable attributes of objects such as length or weight. We describe measurable a- attributes of single objects. We made number bonds with our shoes. One of the standards is for the students to make shapes. They have, they may create larger shapes out of smaller shapes, and they use different materials. Pretty much every day that you go into the kindergarten, there are different materials for students to explore. They also make hypotheses, they use ramps and inclines, another one of our science standards, balancing to further their investigations. We can keep going on more. And if you've ever spent time in the kindergarten, you know that these things don't happen without conflict. Or disagreement. So that's a huge part of what we accomplish in kindergarten. Here we have more ramps. And another video. This was St. Patrick's Day, Mrs. Malo brought in potatoes.
Uh, what are you doing? Wait, store what?
I loved it, Austin was sounding out potato when he kept like, buh, buh, buh. But then he looked at the letters he wrote, and he said, and he said, oh, I see my initials. In kindergarten, another standard is to speak audibly and express thoughts, feelings, and ideas clearly. And as we've said, that happens during play and collaboration. Students in kindergarten have, uh, choice time every morning, after they do a few of their morning jobs, and, uh, that's where a lot of this happens. You can go forward Christina. They also learn how to collaborate and to take turns, problem solve, as we said. It's amazing the messes they can make. And then they can clean them up, too, which is pretty good. You can go forward Christina. Sorry, I'm probably messing up your script.
That's okay.
This is another morning with choice time, I think. Always a dangerous question, what are you doing? It's okay, if we didn't get the whole thing, we can keep going. Collaboration turns into, into sharing. I'll just keep going. This one's fun. On this particular morning, she is part of our two.
What is your plan?
My plan was that I can fit those in there and pretend they're like wood.
Gotta pretend they're wood. Keep on going. This is more, you can keep going Christina, thank you. Uh, of course, there's fine motor practice in kindergarten. Um, one of the things that I thought was like an aha when we were first doing this was to just have materials that students can write with, whether it's whiteboards and markers, or paper and pencil, or whatever, near their, in their play area. And it was like, wow, I never thought of that before. So, the restaurant becomes a place where they take your order, and they write it down. Here, they're actually making a list because they often argue about, uh, who can play in a given area at a certain time, and the rule is that they can only be four, so you put your name on a waitlist, and then when it's your turn, you go in. Easy peasy, solve that problem. Love that. And of course, in kindergarten, there's lots of creativity, stories, and fun. You can keep going Christina. We have celebrated Halloween this year, we celebrated the one-hundredth day of school with all kinds of math activities. We also celebrated the two-twenty-two-twenty-two Tuesday. So, uh, and they had all kinds of activities that they had to do, um, challenges with, that they had to complete in two minutes and things like that. So, now we're gonna move on, because the other initiative that we have been involved in in the past three years is, uh, our association with the Pyramid Model, uh, through the Department of Ed. This has been, uh, a huge, huge undertaking for us, um, but this school has really responded. This is designed to provide tiered support for children who are three, four, and five years old. But what we have found through the trainings is that so many of the trainings are, uh, appropriate for students of all ages. We go to the next slide Christina. So I wanna introduce our team, our shy team here. Our team lead is Keith Conley, who is our guidance counselor. I think he can stand up. And, uh, and stay standing until we get finished, all right? Keith has been huge at, um, keeping our team on track. He's so organized, he always provides us an agenda ahead of time. Uh, he always follows up with our action plan, and, uh, he is tremendous at trying to make sure everyone's voice is heard. Uh, we have Casey Lachas, who is our data coordinator. Um, she is also our OT, so she spends lots of time with young children. Um, but Casey has been the person over the past few years who has kept our data for our team. Alicia Hernandez is the preschool teacher that, uh, so she is considered a practitioner. Casey Malo is a practitioner. And we didn't wanna overburden Sarah Creighton yet, because it was her first year, and she's still involved in play-based learning, but she is an up-and-coming practitioner. Lois Dean Stevens is our preschool coordinator. She's been a team member on our team, and she has also been a representative to the Fostering Footprints Collaborative, which you probably know a little bit about. It involves the Ch- Children's Center and Magic Holes? No, cuz they were both great.
Pulling Osiphe along.
And we're pulling Osiphe along. Uh, and then Michelle McCattan is a parent representative. Michelle has been with us since the beginning, because her oldest child was in preschool at the time that she joined us. And she also has become a member of the Fostering Footprints Collaborative. Autumn Gaska is sitting next to her, she is also a parent representative, who has taken on a leadership role in parent trainings now. Liza Hewitt is not here, she is the process coach that worked with us in 2019 through 21st. I am the recorder for the minutes. Sometimes Keith has to remind me. I'm only the leader when I have to be. And, uh, and sometimes Keith has to remind me, you know, you didn't type those minutes yet from last month's meeting. Carolyn Ramsey is a team member, and also a provider to, uh, many of our youngest students as a speech pathologist and our special ed case manager. Christina Damon is also on the data team, and helping Casey with, uh, VIR data, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Lisa Murray is a support staff practitioner in the preschool, and Carrie Malone is as well, but she couldn't be here tonight. Uh, our coach is Julie Sackett, and, uh, she has been awesome, she's our practice-based coach, she has been for three years. After this year, we will no longer have Julie with us, but I think we should cut it out. I asked the team things that they would want to say, if they were going to say anything. And, uh, Keith just said that it's, you know, that this is our, we are working to implement a three-tiered system that supports best practices for social-emotional learning, supports parents, and is data-driven. Autumn said, I believe our strength is, is the variety of team members, therefore our perspectives and knowledge ranges are wide. I can speak as a parent that I see the results with my child after dealing with the anxiety of COVID limitations and obstacles of emerging learning disabilities, that without this program, I know I would be struggling as a parent, and my son would not be where he is, both in school and out of school. Casey Lachas said, I love the calm in students and adults that, that results from lowered voices and positive teacher language. Students are more independent with visuals, which increases their self-confidence. Mrs. Malo said, I can say the Pyramid Model has helped me to utilize visual schedules, routines, to help students be more independent, and has helped me to learn to give very explicit instruction in social-emotional areas, allowing time for modeling and practice of these skills, like naming and expressing their emotions, problem-solving, using iMessages and tools for self-regulation. So Pyramid Model best practices are being used, as you can see, from both, in both kindergarten and preschool. Our mission is, and we had to develop our own mission, and I just love it, I actually wanna change the mission to the whole school's mission, I think. This is our mission for our team, to play, learn, and grow for a lifetime, do consistent use of those practices to support social-emotional development, and to promote safe, happy, and healthy relationships. We are trying to make sure that every kid knows that who they are at school matters. We love each and every one of them. So, the way this works is, at the beginning of every year, we look at our benchmarks of quality. The benchmarks of quality are a self-assessment, it's forty-one questions that the team has to rate themselves. Once we rate ourselves about our benchmarks of quality, that then is used to develop our action plan for the school year. Our first year, of course, our ratings on the benchmarks of quality were pretty good, we were like, oh yeah, we did that, oh yeah, we did that. And then this year, this year we're like, oh no, no, we, we still aren't doing that the way we should. So it's kinda funny the way that's evolved. We can go to the next slide. The other amazing thing about, uh, this staff is that twenty different staff members or more, including our parents, have completed over seventy-six different trainings to develop our workforce's collective intelligence and skill set. And that includes our specialists, like Mr. Swinerton, who's here tonight, Mrs. Johnson, who teaches music, uh, Mr. Stasic, who teaches art, because these are all teachers who teach our youngest students. So it's incredible, the trainings that we've had, and they have all been free through the Department of Ed. We have had trainings in implicit bias, we've had trainings in trauma-informed practices. A number of our team members have taken the Positive Solutions for Families training, and are now parent trainers, like Autumn, or Carolyn, or Alicia. So I can't say enough about the training and about the staff's willingness to complete these trainings. I mean, the Pyramid Models themselves, when we went to the trainings, one module takes all day, so they are significant. So let's go, so Tier One is nurturing and responsive relationships in high-quality supportive environments. So this is everyone in your class is in Tier One. And there they are, the cutest little ones in the preschool. And as you'll see in these pictures, one of the things we learned right off to was that, um, we needed to rework the preschool. The furniture was too big, the shelves were too high, and, uh, to her credit, Mrs. Hernandez had, uh, major recommendations about how we should rework it, and we did so. And these children are, you know, three and four years old, they can come into the classroom, they can look at the visual schedule, they know exactly what their morning jobs are to do. They know they have to take off their boots and put on their shoes, they know they have to sign their name, they know they have to take out their folder from home to school. It's amazing, it's amazing, they're three. I wish I knew how to do this when I had young children in my own house. Tier Two, so Tier Two is when we have targeted social-emotional supports. So this is where we're teaching them to try to identify and express their emotions, develop problem-solving skills, play cooperat- cooperatively, and develop skills to handle their anger and their disappointment. We have lots of visuals, Alicia brought some over here tonight, too, that are over on these tables, if you wanna look at them. Uh, Mr. Conley goes into the preschool and teaches them as well, and Mrs. Murray and Mrs. Hernandez are reinforcing this all day long. We recently trained the staff in using the same, uh, problem-solving, um, visuals that they are using in preschool. Uh, will you go back to that one Christina, that one you just had? So this particular, um, set of pictures is, uh, a little boy who's four, and his name is William, and he was building, and one of his friends accidentally knocked down his construction. And he got quite upset, and if you look closely, you can even see the problem-solving chart is hanging. is hanging on the toy box right next to them. So working together, the kids figured out how they could help William to reconstruct his building. And they even built a little area to protect it. You see how they put all the furniture around it? That was their solution to the problem. We'll protect his building by putting walls all around it. So pretty cool. Pretty cool. And these are the problem-solving steps. You think about your problem, you get an idea. I love the little light bulb. And then you think about, "What would happen if I try that? Hmm, maybe I will." So these are problem-solving steps that everyone is learning in those early grades. And then we go to Tier Three. And Tier Three is for those students who require individualized intensive supports. That includes planning with their families to meet their needs and address their challenging behaviors. As part of this initiative, we took on the VIR, the Behavior Incident Report, and started using that as one of our data collection tools. And we've been using it since the spring of last year. This is the kind of information that you can look at using the VIR, so that when we have our team meetings, we can look at the data, and we can see if we can come up with a solution to help a given child. We also are providing parent training through that Positive Solutions for Families that we talked about. We provided two in our first year. I will compliment Alicia and Carolyn for doing that. They gave one parent training here in New Durham in 2020, and then they did another in Oscepee in 2020. This year, Autumn is leading a parent training group right now for us, and Carolyn and Alicia are helping her with that. Of course, when a student is at this level, we also bring parents in, and we consult with them, we collaborate with them. We learned a process called the PTRYC. It stands for, there's lots of acronyms in this stuff. Oh, my God, it's ridiculous. It's worse than special ed. So PTRYC stands for Prevent, Teach, Reinforce Young Children. But we, as a team, have had the training, and we have used it now for a few different students, all of whom are older than five years old. And we've found it's very effective. And the approach involves the parent as a team member right from the initial start. It's basically working toward the function of the behavior, but it's also directed to try to teach and reinforce behaviors that we want to encourage. Would you say anything else about that, Keith?
No, it's a lengthy process, but a very worthwhile process.
It is a lengthy process, but a worthwhile process, as all of this is, right? So finally, I'm sorry that I've talked so much. I just wanted to talk about sustainability. So our team has had lots of kudos from the Department of Ed because we are a pretty varied group. We have admin on our team. We have parent representatives on our team. We have met monthly for three years. We involve every single person in decision-making, whether that person is a parent, or a support staff member, or a classroom teacher. Our team knows that this initiative is coming to an end, and so we are prepared. This is our last year with our expert coach, Julie Sackett. But Keith Conley has become a practice-based coach and has been working with Julie all year, so that he will be able to take over when she is no longer part of the equation. And I think that our team is devoted enough to this cause. You know, from your previous meetings at New Durham School, that we are big on social-emotional learning. So we will continue to see this move forward. We've also made a plan this year where we felt like the large team would be more effective if we split it into subcommittees. And so now we have a best practices team. That is basically the practitioners themselves. We have the data team that looks at the data and compiles the data. And then we have a parent engagement team. And so we're trying to divide the work so that each one of us can do these little bits in one month, and then we come back and report to the larger team. So we are pretty happy with our efforts, and we feel like we are, you know, on the right path. This also fits in with the greater goal in the district that we're working with Sarah Skopan on, to develop multi-tiered systems of support. This one just happens to be more geared toward our youngest kids. So I'm sorry I talked so much. The experiences have been priceless for us. We are very happy that we have engaged in it, and I appreciate your listening and your support. And if you have questions, you can ask them. Any questions?
I just have one question for Casey. Casey, what was the objective of the potatoes?
Well, we've been working on the forces, the force of motion. So it's to figure out different ways that they could make it move further with the bush. So the potato races.
I just have a question. Maybe I missed it. Did you say DOE support for this is going away?
Well, the end of our time with them is coming up. It was a three-year. I don't know the greater one. Do you know that, Keith?
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah, we weren't involved in the beginning. In Fostering Footprints, the Children's Center was the target the first year. So we joined in the second year, right? So.
So is this just a pilot program that they were running, and now they're not going to do it anymore?
We're still going to have access to the tools. We'll still have access to online trainings. We'll still have access to the VIR, those things. It's the personnel, the process-based coach, and the expert coaching that we will no longer have access to.
But we have.
Thank you.
That's right, we have our.
We have our experts.
Social is being moved into the Office of Social Emotional Wellness at the DOE, so it's being taken over by a different department. And there is a DOE consultant that works with the district from that office already, so.
And Lois just said that the support would be available if we wanted to pay for it, but they're looking at other grants and other avenues to support all the preschools around the state to continue to work. And they're going to keep the database in the Hampshire system, so we can continue to pull up the data.
Kelly, how does this fit in with the toolbox that we, you know, we utilize here, that I know that we've been working with?
You guys want to answer that, or you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, it's all connected.
I know I'm not saying that eloquently.
It's connected to social-emotional learning.
Yeah.
Both are, they intertwine, and they kind of complement each other.
Okay.
Alicia just said it fits in perfectly. And, you know, with the youngest kids, we don't necessarily teach them and use all the tools. And like the listening tool, we teach them whole-body listening instead of using the phraseology that's on the listening tool card. But I know I have heard my grandson, who is in Mrs. Malo's class, talk about the garbage tool.
Okay.
It's a good one for five-year-olds.
It's been a lot in our house, too.
Brody? I just wanted to ask real quick about, like, educational attainment, at least short-term and more long-term. Obviously, it's only about five years, so that's a pretty small sample size. But have you noticed, at least short-term, compared to peers, children that are in this program are performing better, or at least more emotionally in tune with their peers for later life skills? And how can you kind of see that long-term? Is that going to translate to better skills in high school, or, you know, better attainment in high school?
Well, we hope, you know, and what we do is hope. And I think they're getting it across all grade levels. It's just not, it's a pyramid model. So we're, you know, they're still getting the social-emotional skills that they need.
They do measure their social-emotional skills. There are six key skills that the pyramid model uses. And they have done a little assessment of the kindergarten students in January using a rating scale as to whether or not they have those skills, you know. And then they measure them again in June. It's so hard right now, though, because you have the pandemic, right? So we don't have three years of good data on this. So if the kids weren't even in school for a year or there.
Could you still compare them, though, to other students that are in the program? Or do you think that's not fair? Well, every student in New Durham's in them. Okay, I don't know if there was a choice.
Yeah, it's focused on age group, preschool, K.
Autumn, when they said that you were going out to Oscepee, was it to go teach for parents? Oh, Alicia, I'm sorry. How was the parents' perception? I mean, have you had a chance to talk to any parents at all? Or has it started? Or Alicia?
We're doing virtual.
Okay, and that's okay.
We did our first one live, and we posted two parents.
Okay, well, and I'm sure it's very small.
Virtual was hard.
Yeah.
It wasn't as, I don't know, but maybe it was not as effective. But let me go back to my personal.
Well, it's a tough conversation, I think.
Well, we think now we're doing virtual. We're not just starting, but definitely people are feeling that now that we're getting over the hump, we can get back to focusing on not just getting through and surviving, but actually working on.
Moving forward.
That has been really blocking down home life, schooling. So the turnout was small just because we're still getting over it.
Correct.
We're still tired, so I need to figure out our schedule. But the conversations that we had, definitely parents' needs, that helped to get everyone back on that, that the life that we wanted everyone to have.
Yeah. Good. Yeah, good. Thank you.
I know this, too. I have a grandson also in Mrs. Malo's class. And my grandson and his family live with me. So I have noticed that my daughter and her husband both use the quiet voice and actually try to reason, well, not reason with them, but speak to them softly. "I can see that you're upset. How can we help?" So I see that it's out there and that, because we do send home, at least in preschool, we do send home, and I know kindergarten, too, because I do the final. But we have paper sheets that give them things to, like, "This is a way to deal with this. This is a way to deal with that." And I can see in my own home that it is getting out there, and parents are using it.
That's great.
I know there's a huge body of research that supports the idea, the conclusion that students achieve better academic outcomes when they have that readiness for learning, when they have strong social-emotional skills. And I think, I can just speak as a parent of New Durham students, that my children have incredible dexterity with their emotions. And I'd like to think that they get a lot of that from me, but I have to give you so much credit as a faculty for really committing to supporting all students' social-emotional needs. And it's really, I'm just honored to be a parent of this community.
Is this program unique to New Durham?
I think it's very strong here, for sure. I would say, as a parent, I would echo Stephanie that that, you know, again, I know there's a lot of programs in the district like that, but I would say here, you know, I can speak, you know, as a parent, you know, and Stephanie, that it is very strong here in New Durham. But I know, like, you know, Crescent Lake has, I mean, we've rolled out a lot of social-emotional stuff here at the district.
So just to clarify, this specific program is unique to New Durham?
Well, it actually originated at the Children's Center.
Children's Center.
It started there, and then it came to New Durham. And I don't know how well-developed it is in Oscepee. I know Oscepee is at least the beginnings. So it is in all three of our schools, but first it was Children's Center, then New Durham, and now Oscepee.
Yeah, but Crescent Lake has some other social-emotional.
And this is specifically for preschool?
Yeah.
And those are the only schools that we have that have preschool. Our collaboration with the Children's Center is for all of the communities. And then we have our own preschools in New Durham and Oscepee. So that covers all three.
The teachers all at Oscepee have all done the trainings, the modules, so they're all trained in that. We're just giving them the kits. They just don't have the team structure yet. But they're starting to use some of the behavior tools and things like that, and incorporating that in the social-emotional thing. That's been actually our focus for the preschool team throughout our three. And we meet once a month, and we discuss the social-emotional and what it looks like. Alicia has been great sharing with her ideas. And so again, you know, we're kind of building the plane, as they say.
Yep.
But Oscepee is moving quickly.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Terrific.
Yeah, this was a great, great presentation. I don't think it was too long at all. Very interesting. Thank you all. So for the next item under the superintendent's report, we're going to move to field trip requests. And I have to say, it is so great to be able to talk about some of the things that used to be routine as far as our field trips. We have a field trip, a couple here. One is for Costa Rica, and the other is for Cebu and Montreal. Karen Jacobs is going to present to us on the Costa Rica trip.
Excellent. I'll call this presentation that I have, because this is going to be really helpful. Might we take a five-minute recess? Is that?
I'm sorry? Sure, let's, okay, while you're, we're going to take just a really quick break. Everyone, if they want to just take a quick break, and we'll be back in just a few minutes. Thank you all for your patience.
All right, well, Karen and Julie, you are on.
All right, great, thank you. I'm Karen Jacobs. I'm the academic coordinator for World Language at Kingswood, and I'm also one of the Spanish teachers. And this is Julie Gary. She's our French teacher at the high school. So we're here tonight proposing two educational, language, and culture-focused trips. So two separate ones, pretty different ones. And one is to Cebu, and one is to Costa Rica. So why do we want to do these trips? One of the big things in our language department is, obviously, we want the students to be proficient in the language, and we want them to learn about the culture and cultural perspectives, and be open to the world. And we're hoping to develop intercultural competence in our students. And so what that means is, really simplified definition of that is just having students able to communicate with others in their own language or another language, be open to perspectives, and understand that people have different perspectives because of where they're coming from. So travel is one of the best ways to develop both of those things, the language skills and the intercultural competence. So the first trip I'm going to talk about is to Costa Rica, and hoping to do it in April 2023. And where, so we'd be going to the Osa Peninsula, which, has anyone been to, Miranda, Costa Rica? Okay. It is beautiful. It is a safe, very safe country. It's one of the, I think it's in Central America, and it's the oldest democracy. They don't have an army. It's very safe. It's also very touristy. There's tons of tourism there, which makes us feel safe and feel good. But in the Osa Peninsula, which is all the way down here, there's not a lot of tourism, which is great for our trip and for our students because they don't hear a lot of English. There's a lot of Spanish. So I went this past February with Port Smith High School, with the students and faculty, and I'll share some pictures. And it was an excellent trip. So I'm hoping to do 10 days in April 2023. And so in the past, I have done five trips with local students and with some colleagues, but they've never been officially through the school. And I've used EF Tours, which is this large company in Cambridge. And because it's such a large company, it's for profit, their trips are much more expensive. So with the OSA is the. So with the OSA is the company that we're going to use, we're hoping to use, and it's actually owned by Helene Wempel. Helene Wempel is just like me, she's the World Language Department Chair at Portsmouth High School, and she's a language teacher. She lived in the Osa Peninsula for, uh, three years, and she's been doing trips, student trips, with Winnebago and Portsmouth High School since two thousand and four. She also does teacher trips, so I went on a teacher trip to this, um, place in August as well. And she works with, her partner is Marlin, who is, um, a Costa Rican. She lives, she owns this, Helene, they call it a lodge, it's not really a lodge, it's like camp with, um, bunkers. So that's where, that's kind of the main place that we stay. And Marlin and her husband are the two Costa Ricans who have these deep connections in this community. And these are just some pictures, just to give you some visuals. This is from February from the student trip that, that we did with, we had, um, sixteen students, and then we had four teachers from Portsmouth High School. So you can see some of the things they do is we tried delicious food, um, there's horseback riding, a boat trip, we could fly on that plane there, um, they tried coconut right from the tree, they cut it down, we walked in the rainforest, um, this is sugarcane juice, and they're cooking on a sustainable farm there. One of the best things about this trip that I loved so much, as a teacher, um, we did a similar itinerary, it was a teacher's book. The students, seeing the students visit schools, so there's four school visits in this trip, so it's not like an all-inclusive trip where we're going to the beach every day. So students get really excited about those type of trips, but that's not what this is at all. So we visit different schools, and the students interact with the children. Uh, they play games, they teach them English, sometimes they'll play soccer. And I just love this picture here, you can just see that the students are just really interacting with the kids in class. And then up in the top left there, we, there's this gold mining community, which is kind of interesting, it's still, um, one of the only gold mining communities in the Osa Peninsula. So we go there and learn about that as well. So the, this is a sample itinerary, which I'll just kind of skim through here, but also to mention there would be four chaperones, so it would be myself, um, to be determined, Kingswood, hopefully a Kingswood teacher, and a other teachers. Helene Wempel, who's a Portsmouth High School teacher and owns like the OSA. And then we also have a guide, Luis Cordero, who is the owner of the lodge as well, who Helene has known for twenty years, and she's actually the godmother of their, their, their daughter. So this is the ten days, this is a possible sample itinerary, this is what we did with Portsmouth. So they arrive in, in San Jose, uh, the Osa Peninsula is about eight hours away on bus, and we actually take a bus, because it's a great way for the students to see the landscape and see the houses, and we stop and approve, all sorts of possible things. Um, we do it over two days. And then we arrive at El Sable, which is this over here, El Sable is the, it's enormous beautiful tree, but it's also the name of the lodge. So we're there for two nights, and we do some things, um, in the town called Puerto Feliz, we visit a high school, we go, we do go to the beach, we visit mangroves, learn about the importance of mangroves, they're so, so important, um, especially as we're seeing the waters kind of, um, Costa Rican, they said, eating up the shore, right, they're seeing that a lot, and so mangroves protect that. We visit a sustainable har, a farm, and then the big part of the trip that this will be new for me and the reason I went for the Portsmouth Regional High School, or Portsmouth, they're not regional, they're just Portsmouth. Uh, Portsmouth High School, I wanted to see this, I wanted to meet the families. I had experienced a homestay, but I wanted to see how it went with the students. So the students actually stay with Costa Rican families for five nights while they're there, and that is one of the, the richest part of this trip. And where students, their language growth just takes off. Uh, it's pretty amazing. And then they're interacting with people on the same level in the country. So it's not, I've done service in the past, and that, um, isn't quite the same, that's not what I want them to, what I really want students to come away with, that we're there to help, we're there to learn from other people and communicate. So they get dropped off, students who get dropped off every day about three or four of the homestays, they have dinner with the families, they do errands, they might go to the beach, they do all sorts of things. They have breakfast the next day, then we pick them up. And then we do scavenger hunt, they do internships where they might work at, um, a berberia, which is like a fruit stand, uh, some other students worked at a, um, like a tourist gift shop, some other students worked at a paper store, and then some worked at a, um, a hardware store. When I say work, they were there for like two hours, and they're just kind of interacting with people, it's called an internship. Uh, we go to a rainforest, they do have another little afternoon at the beach, and then where are our schools? This is La Palma School is another school, and then this right here, oh yeah, there's another school, that third, it's just preschools. Um, they do a horseback riding, um, horseback riding up to this, that gold mining town, we visit a school there, and then kind of just wrap up and head back. So during the trip, we do lots of language, some big language focus, I, I felt it, it was really amazing to see students, you know, coming, wondering things, asking things, using the language. As a language teacher, I thought, this is the trip I want to do. Because we pick them up in the morning, and they have all these questions about language and about culture, and it's just really wonderful experience, really different than the other trips that I've done, which I've done three to Costa Rica, one to Spain, and one to Ecuador. This one's just, um, exceptional. Um, I'm not going to show you the video, because I had some pictures here, um, and I don't want to, so I can zoom to them. Yeah. Oh. I escaped. I put in the pictures and I thought that would do instead of the video. So a tentative timeline, if this were to be approved in April, um, I would have, and Julie has a very similar timeline, so we won't, we won't repeat this too much, but a meeting for students, probably during task, and then a meeting for students and parents about the trip. And then students would apply for this trip, and then would have to write a short essay, get teacher recommendations. And then since it's a language-focused trip, it would be for students in Spanish four or above, and students who have either taken AP Spanish Language and Culture, so that's running this year, hopefully next year, they would get preference.
Kara, about how many students would be eligible to apply?
So as many can apply, but only twelve will go.
About how many students are in Spanish four or?
Oh, how many, uh, I don't know, I went to our classes, I still don't know the numbers yet, but I know that, so right now, students, there's eight juniors in AP Spanish, so they would be seniors next year, but there's a whole bunch of them in Spanish four that I would say there'd probably be thirty that would be eligible to apply. But this type of trip is not, I don't, I'd be interested to see how many would apply, because it's, uh, it's a different trip once they start, they realize like, oh, this would really be out of my comfort zone.
I guess the follow-up question, so I see, I'm maybe jumping ahead a little bit, but you have, uh, twelve students that you're going to accept, but is there a minimum that you'll take?
So I, I think six would be the minimum, yes. I have, I have to check with Helene about that, but I think it's six. And then it would just be one Kingswood chaperone, and then Helene, and then Marlin and Luis. And so May two thousand twenty-two, students would be no positive of their acceptance, twelve would be accepted. And then throughout the year, we would work on things, so in task, or if we have, we'd hopefully have them in class, so we'd do investigations, discussions, and preparation for the trip. And then April two thousand twenty-three, it would be during April vacation, but a few days before, just so that we can come back and have a date, especially me, to, uh, breathe and recoup from the vacation, because as, as a chaperone, it's, it is a lot of work, but really work. So the cost, the total cost is approximately twenty-six hundred, which is about a thousand dollars cheaper than if we were to use EF Tours. And that includes the flight, all in-country meals, lodging, transportation, and all the activity costs. There would be some travel insurance, these things are changing so much, but when we went, uh, when I went in August and in February, they do travel insurance through Costa, the Costa Rican government mandated it. And then should the U, United States government is still requiring a negative test to get on a plane and fly back here, and that was a hundred and sixty dollars, which seemed rather expensive, but that's what, um, I, I, I think that might go down, because there's a lot of tests out there, and they're just handing you tests. So that, I feel, is a really, uh, instead of EF Tours, I feel like this is a wonderful trip for our students, and the, the cost is much more affordable. And they really didn't spend much money otherwise, except for the airport, because the airport's so expensive. So Julie, pura vida, that means pure life, and, and those who've been to Costa Rica maybe have a t-shirt or a hat, or you've heard it, uh, but it's kind of their motto, and it's a wonderful cultural perspective, and that's actually the lodge where, where it's kind of a whole base. So before we go on to Quebec, do you have any questions about any of that? Yes, very.
I just have one question about the selection process. How, are you going to decide if you have like twenty, if you don't mind me asking?
Yes, no, that's good, and I, I, so Helene, who does the Portsmouth trip, she has a system that she's going to give to me, and I'm sorry that I have to have tonight, but she has kind of a point system, so students get a certain amount of points, um, for each of the, the categories, so their grades, teacher recommendations, and talk to their counselor, read their essay, see what level of Spanish they are, talk to their language teacher, like, how, um, you know, how into Spanish really are they, right? Like, are they, do they really want to go? And, uh, yeah, so we have, I, I can, um, I can get that, but that's all we're doing.
Will, will the students know that criteria at any time?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Kara, have you thought about how students who might not be in a, a situation where they can afford to go?
Yeah, so I was, Julie and I talked about this, and we've talked a little bit about fundraising, and thought maybe we could do fundraising, but I, I do know that there is, you know, there's, there's money in the community, so hopefully we could, but I, I don't have any.
I, I just think that we would be able to find a way, if, if one of your other options do work out, through the Wood Estate, that might be a.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good option.
Right, like, will, will cost be the, a determining factor for a student that really wants to go?
Well, yeah, because I think with Kathy's point, using the Wood Estate would probably be a great option to use some of those funds, because it's for education purposes, so that's a, that would be a great option.
And, um, just one more thing, I, I guess I'm open to other questions as well, but just thinking, um, we were just talking to Kathy during the break, and thinking a lot of students have, not a lot, but, but a number of students have the opportunity, they've traveled with their parents, and they've gone to different countries, but this experience is so unique, because you're actually interacting with people from the country. Um, even, you know, you're visiting schools, you're seeing how people live, you're doing that homestay, you're really seeing how people live, so as opposed to like a, an inclusive, or you're zip lining, or you're, you're, and we did that on our other trips, and that is real fun. So this trip is just something that a lot of students probably would never have the opportunity to do, so that's why. Any other Costa Rican questions before we go to Quebec?
Hi. All right, um, going to echo a lot of what Kara just mentioned, uh, where I would like to propose a trip to Quebec, to our neighbors up to the north. Um, ever since I've started at Kingswood, I have, uh, not been able to do a trip, my members have been fairly low. Um, they have been increasing in recent years. Um, it's just, you know, five hours away, if I can take them to a Francophone region and immerse them in a culture, I mean, that's what we try to do every day in our classrooms. It's a communicative, communicative-based approach, uh, to learning language, and I can only give them so much, but it's getting them into a place where they can practice the skills that we've been doing is invaluable. Um, so this trip, again, would also be for next year, next April, um, the twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, so it's actually at the early onset of April vacation, three nights, four days. Students would be back, um, for the half, um, the rest of their vacation time. Um, unlike Kara, this would be a trip through Explorer Cup, which is a division of, um, EF Tours that you have used in the past. Uh, they also go by World Strides. So I have gotten an estimate from, um, you know, a representative there. We would leave to Park Wolfboro, Kingswood Regional High School by bus, tour bus, um, head up to Quebec. Day one, uh, we meet with our tour director, we have a guide, um, everywhere we go. And that guide, I have asked specifically for one that will speak in French for my students. So again, this is an educational tour, and it's one where they will practice and use their French. Um, we'll meet the director, we'll, we'll travel to Quebec, we'll see all of the landmarks you see there, the Château de France, and Yerba Cepa, the dinner. Um, also in day one, I think it continues here, and the next one, they do. Um, I should mention that we would be staying in a hotel for three nights. Breakfast, uh, is included as well as dinners, um, and I'll get to the ties, the, the pricing on, on the end of these slides. Um, but these are a few other things, we also have the director leading us through the escalier, uh, which is known as casco, which is actually, um, broken neck stairs. We won't have any accidents, no, you'll allow that in my class? Um, but you can see that what that does is it, it links the lower to the upper part of Quebec, if you've ever been up there, a beautiful place. Visiting churches, um, those are always open, and they're free, and it's got great architecture, students learn about the vocabulary for architecture in high classes, so when you have a guide and they're using all of the same vocabulary, they're really able to take a lot away from it. Um, museums, we will learn about the history of Quebec, which, uh, Wolfboro definitely has some ties to, and I'll also talk about that in a few minutes. Um, the Plains of Abraham, we will look at the battlefield, and there'll be a reenactment for students, uh, to really bring to life the history and the culture. Um, Mo莫汉西 Falls is a beautiful place where they can see and just appreciate the geography of the region. And then a sugar shack, you know, we, uh, maple syrup here, as you know, in this area, but, um, Quebec is really a place to go to really learn, to see how they do it, and maybe see what's different, um, up there. So, um, traditional entertainment would encompass, um, music and, um, dance, and just, um, some great arts with that. Um, also, uh, this is that connection, actually, there's a picture of myself and my three kids years ago, when we went up, and, uh, there's General Wolfe, so a little bit of history there. Uh, my students are amazed, you know, did you know what Wolfboro was named after? And, and the story says that he never actually set foot in Wolfboro, but our town is named after the British general, who had been victorious and actually died on the Plains of Abraham. So students are there making the connections, um, relating Kingswood to John, John Quinworth, um, and just bringing to life, um, you know, that connection for them. And when we talk about it in class, they are so interested in this, um, that I can take them to the actual place in the battlefield, uh, would really be amazing. Also, day three, um, visiting museums, um, looking at the citadel, which is an old active, military fort, still active today, um, touring through that, that's where we would see that statue of General Wolfe. Um, copper art museum to see what local artists are doing with some of their materials there, and then having dinner as well. Um, day four, we say wolfron, fortunately, uh, but we don't leave without, uh, taking a look at the village de Bure, which is, um, where the indigenous peoples to that, uh, native land, um, set up, um, and are preserving their history, um, there. So for students to see, uh, the history really, um, you know, as, as it was, and, um, being able to learn about, um, those peoples there, and have an appreciation for that culture. And then we would travel back home by bus. Um, so again, timeline is similar, um, parent meeting, um, students would also apply in this case, um, teacher recommendations, essay. Um, unlike Kara, though, however, I would actually open this to all students that have taken French, uh, whether they are, are in right now, or even next year, or have taken a French one or two, and maybe aren't taking it at the time. And that reason is, is because I haven't had the large numbers like, um, some of the Spanish, um, students in Spanish classes, so I'd really like to open it up to all, um, up to twenty-one can be accepted. Um, and, uh, let's see, cost for this, uh, going through the tour company, um, it includes the following there, about a thousand seventy-two per student, um, round trip, bus transportation included, the hotel stay, uh, the breakfast and dinner, um, they do have lunch on their own, so we kind of come up with, you know, additional costs and spending money and what we would suggest for students. Um, they have that tour director that is speaking language to them, all tours are guided, uh, this is an educational trip. Um, so again, you're not seeing things like shopping at the malls and other thing, I mean, this is for them to learn about culture and history and a practice language. Um, and I think the student ratio, seven to one, so depending if I get up to twenty-one, we would have three chaperones, myself and, um, the Kingwood, Kingswood Regional High School, um, you know, teachers would be, would be key. So I think that might cover everything I wanted to say. Any questions for me? Yes?
I have questions about both trips, it's the same question, that's security. Um, it can be monk in Providence, Rhode Island, it can be monk getting off of Boston, Boston. So, um, both places are relatively safe, the peninsula, I understand, as well as movie stars go, so, um, uh, but whether you're staying with families in a home, uh, children can be rather creative on being able to sneak out or have people sneak in. So I was wondering if, uh, if that's been discussed, you know, plan B, what if something happens? For example, is, uh, the tour Quebec Standard Hotel. Is, is the company that you work with, uh, offering security for the?
Yeah, there's a security guard.
Yeah, for the floor that everybody will be on.
Correct.
Yeah, everybody will have tags, if you don't have a tag, you're out of here.
I'm not sure about tags.
I'm not sure about tags. When I, when we used EF Tour, or I've done EF Tours before, we never had a security guard in hotels. I don't know, I don't know if that's a common practice. Students, we hope they lock their doors and we will take them. In Costa Rica, the homestays, there are families that have been doing this for, you know, 15 to 20 years, and, but students.
Hasn't had an incident.
Helene has never, she's never had any, any issues?
It happens quite easily. I'll give you an example. We had overnight set up to go to visit Johnson Wells in Providence, and Culinary Arts went for the marketing students. So we went to a huge mall in Providence. Well, the young ladies were very creative in getting the young men to follow the bus back to the motel. So at one o'clock in the morning, the management calls and wants to know where the chaperone, and of course, yeah, we are. And they said, well, we have some people that are on campus that aren't supposed to be here, so, I mean, it can happen so quickly. So I don't know. We came up with a way probably not to ever do that again, but it is worth coming up with some type of security plan, you know, like who's in charge. Cell phones are nice today because everybody can communicate really quickly. But my, that's my main concern.
Something I could share about in Costa Rica, all the WhatsApp is, WhatsApp is a messaging, messaging, it's like iMessage, but there's a family group chat, and the families are constantly, I was on it, and they were constantly contacting Helene to share pictures, and so if anything could happen, they're easily, I mean, they would just contact us. Just like here, we call the police. I'm sorry that that happened in Providence. Again, I've been on five trips with local students, and I have had one incident where a student had her camera like this and it was stolen, and that was a shame, and it was awful, but I've been lucky to not have those issues. So yes.
And that's part of the education ahead of time, preparing students to go, and they also sign contracts.
Yes.
For the structure.
Contracts, alcohol, contracts.
Which spells out all of those items.
Yes.
If you're right, it can count.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering, this is Gary. How would you, so obviously you would prioritize French students, I assume, how would you end up deciding which of, you know, filling the rest of the up to 21 students, so you have more applicants than, you know, you were expecting? How would you end up kind of discerning which non-French speaking students possibly, possibly, or students who had very limited French language? How would you kind of discern which ones to take and which ones not to take?
So you mean if I had an abundance over 21?
Yeah, yeah, an abundance, and you have to start making decisions. Do you have any kind of?
Prior to COVID, I kind of did kind of feel out parents and students and sent things out, and I got eight confirmations. I'm really shooting for the 21. But you're right, if that were to happen, honestly, I'd take a look at my seniors probably number one. I've been at Kingswood now almost two rotations of students going through, and I haven't been able to offer a trip. And it really, it's something that's in my heart that I really want to do. I'd look at those seniors first. I'd look at, you know, again, language ability, since we're going to be in the language. Education, I mean, I'd take a look at those essays, same thing, on that point scale, the recommendations go a long way for teachers. So I'd really be looking for that all around picture of that student that really wants to go, that is going to really benefit from having that extra language component. But I'd probably have to say that, you know, seniority working its way down would probably be my strategy. Yes?
You mentioned two teacher recommendations. Do you also take a parent recommendation? Like, to what extent is it important to know what a student's habits are at home?
Well, I would, yeah, that's a good question. We hadn't considered that, but maybe we should. Hopefully, if the parent is coming to the meeting, we meet the parent, the parent asks questions. Hopefully, they have the door set.
All the numbers set.
Good luck.
Kind of curious in terms of this being a language experience, in Quebec, they speak a French that is much different from the French that might be taught here, you know, the Parisian French. Do you see that as any sort of, you know, sort of complicating factor?
Not at all. I actually, I expose my students to Francophone regions around the world. We just wrapped up a unit on Senegal, or in multiple islands. I do a lot with Quebec. They actually do a whole unit on Quebec, so they would have that prior to even going. It is different, yes, but they are hearing it. We have classrooms that are full of language from bell to bell. So all of the authentic resources that we use, we give them a variety. So although I am speaking to them in Parisian French, as I was instructed, they're also receiving multiple resources in the Quebecois. And I've had guests as well come in from the Franco-American Society. I really side with Paul.
She's pretty special.
But I do, I appreciate that because there is a difference.
And I know from personal experience in Quebec City, there's a certain disdain for people who do not speak the right French.
More religious questions. Does EF Tours incorporate the liability insurance into the overall cost? Do you know?
There is a travel insurance they recommend. That would be an additional cost.
That would be one of the additional. Is Canada requiring, like COVID tests if it's Costa Rica?
As of April 1st, no more testing is required to go in, but they are ever changing up there. So again, that is something that the tour company looks at. They look at the country, you know, of target, and they decide whatever they're going to be doing and requiring at the border, that's what they are going to be requiring right now. There are masks required for all of these trips as well right now. So, you know, they're changing, it's very fluid, a very fluid situation up there. So I'm hoping in a year that things will be even, you know, restrictions will go even more, and that's really my hope.
This is also like a plan for the worst, hope for the best kind of question. If the world takes a turn for the worse, if there's a resurgence and they're canceling trips, is there a way for students to recoup their deposits?
Yes, they just added COVID-19 onto their list of, you know, in their cancellation policy, that that is one of the items that whether a student has COVID-19 is unable to go, whether something like that happens, are on the trip, that yes, you are reimbursed any monies, and there is probably a little deposit in there to hold the spot. They, if you want to continue the trip, I know CrossFit Mountain, this has kind of happened, they're just going this year on their trip. I've been seeking out area schools too for support, looking into what company did kind of go through when I searched out Explorica. And so they're just kind of rolling that over to the following year for students that were still interested to go. If something happened, they were able to keep that credit in their account or receive their refund.
Okay, anything else? Okay?
Probably need a motion.
We do. On these two trips, this is an action item, so we need a motion to approve these two trips for next year.
I'll make the motion to approve both of those.
Second it.
Oh, good.
Made by Brody, seconded by Jim Pittman. Okay, any other questions before we take a vote?
What's that?
Okay, Brody.
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Board's side as well. Thank you very much. Excellent. Great job, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, the next is also a field trip, but it doesn't really require any permission. It's just notification because it's our health occupation students are, have a, will be going to Nashville in June for the state conference, where they network with other students, participate in competitions, and attend leadership education workshops. Before the pandemic, it was something that we were doing each year, and I'm really so glad that we're getting back to it. So it'd be exciting for the kids, I'm sure they're, they're really looking forward to it. And of course, should we see an uptick in Omicron, then it would be reevaluated, so be a front row for them. The next item is end of the year events. And the first thing that I'm going to ask you is, our joint board meeting right now is scheduled right after April vacation. That makes it really difficult for Chef Bordeaux and the students to do all the prep work that's required for the dinner. So they're asking if we could move the joint boards meeting to May 9th, because I think it would be impossible for them to do the kind of dinner that they usually do. So if that works for you all, I would need a motion.
So we're changing the date from the 2nd to the 9th?
2nd. May 2nd to the?
We're not doing the training on the 9th?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to work on the 9th.
Oh, okay.
Will we move the whole board meeting? A regular board meeting from the 2nd to the?
Yes, we move everything to the 9th.
So we'll reschedule the training.
We're going to have to talk about that anyway. I'll make a motion that we move the joint boards meeting to 9th May.
2nd.
Okay, moved by Charlene. Hang on a second. Moved by Charlene, seconded by Tim. Okay, so we're moving the board meeting from May 2nd to May 9th, correct?
Yep.
And the, and the joint board meeting, the regular board meeting and the joint board meeting. Okay, Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Board's side as well. So we'll move that to the 9th of May.
Thank you. Chef will be so happy and so appreciative. All right, the next item is end of school. If we have no, no more snow, and I hope we don't, because after all, it's April 4th, and this is why I always wait till the April meeting to do this, really hoping we don't have any significant snow in April. And if we don't, our last day of school will be June 21st, and the 21st will be a half day, as is traditional. So we were fortunate that most of our snow came on the weekends this year. It was, it was great for me and for the kids.
21st is a Tuesday. Tuesday, 21st.
And?
There was snow in all of them. I had snow everywhere.
I was so mad.
And there wasn't in Wolfboro.
Yeah, but it'll go away tomorrow.
It's already gone, I saw it on my security.
And graduation, as we talked about at the last meeting, will be either the 10th or 11th, depending on the weather. If the weather's good, it will be Friday night. If the weather's not so great, it will be 10:00 AM Saturday, if the weather's good, Saturday morning, and if we still don't have good weather, we'll look at 6:00 on Saturday evening. So we'll have three opportunities to have it outside. And for those of you that haven't been through this process before, the reason for that is to allow as many people as possible the opportunity to attend, because when we're indoors, it inevitably eliminates some family members, and we don't want to do that, or even friends. So having it outside allows everyone to have as many people as they would like.
What is graduation?
The 10th or the 11th. So we have lots of activities, and you'll see these activities listed on future meeting dates and events on the next board meeting, but I'm just going to go over the senior activities so you have the dates now. The prom is May 5th. I'm sorry, May 7th. Academic awards, May 26th. Scholarship night, June 2nd. Senior banquet, June 3rd. Baccalaureate, June 5th. Sports award, am I going too fast? They'll be in the minutes anyway. Sports awards, June 8th, and then the Lakeside graduation, June 9th. So busy, busy time. Are we ready to move on to the school board meeting schedule? So?
Yeah.
Is the Lakeside graduation at the Arts Center?
It usually is.
Usually at the Arts Center, yes. Are they going to do the dinner beforehand, like the past? Yeah, the Lakeside graduation, in the past, the families have been invited to a dinner at the LRTC first, and then they walk over to the Arts Center and have the graduation there. So hopefully, we can do that again this year.
So you'll see in your packet a draft of the school board meetings for next year. And what I'm asking for is whether or not you want the schedule as it is here in terms of what school we're in. I'm assuming that everyone is wanting to go back to our traditional schedule of being out in the schools, seeing the teachers and the kids, et cetera. So this is just a draft schedule for you to look at to see if this works for you.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft, like 22, 23.
I'll second it.
Who's seconding it then?
Charlene.
Thank you. The, my only question, I guess, is on the preliminary adoption at Carpenter School. We've done that at Carpenter School quite a, quite a few times, I think. I'm just wondering if we should move that to a different location. We've used Carpenter School, you know, several times for the preliminary adoption, and it might be good to have that at a different school.
Which one are you thinking?
Well, Jack, we talked in the past about the fact that having the board reorganization meeting and teacher contracts here is a strain on several people because they have to travel a long distance to get here. We had, we had thought about flipping New Durham into the middle of the schedule and having a centralized school, either centralized at Carpenter. How could we just flip them? New Durham?
We could do, we could do that, I guess, New Durham for the?
For the budget adoption.
For the preliminary adoption in December. And then Carpenter.
Carpenter for the reorganization.
Carpenter in April for the reorganization.
Because we talked about that, remember we talked about the fact that?
We did.
Well, the admins were traveling a long distance to get here.
Right.
Because it's about as far as you can get away to the district.
Yeah, certainly with the reorganization, you know, Carpenter's certainly a little more centralized to the district as far as getting the administration.
When we run into the same issue, though, with preliminary adoption of the budget as the public, I mean, wouldn't we want it also to be in a central location?
We, we used to do it always at the, at the high school or at the, in the auditorium, and, and we felt it was much better to try to get it around, because the final, the final adoption is going to be in Wolfboro anyway. But to try to move the preliminary process, you know, around the district somewhere. So each year, we try to pick a different school to do it. But we've done it, we've done it a couple of times, at least a couple of times, Carpenter. And I think it's greater, better to get it out in the community.
The other, the other thing I would offer in that, Brody, is the three finance meetings where all of this is discussed. It's always in the polls, so.
Always in Wolfboro.
No, that makes sense.
Okay, so, so we'll, we would then switch the December meeting to New Durham, and then the April meeting to Carpenter School. Okay, those that made the motion and seconded, are you okay with those changes?
Happy with those.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of the revised school board meeting schedule for next year? Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Board's side as well. Okay.
So the next item on the agenda is the petition. As you were? As you all recall, at a recent school board meeting, a petition was delivered to the school board. And the petition was to convene a special school district meeting to end the mask mandate. The mask mandate ended on February 24th, shortly after the petition was submitted, and thus, it became a moot issue. However, a citizen said that the intent of the petition was that the mask mandate be ended permanently. This was not stated in the petition, but I think it's best for the board to formally address this. So before you go into discussion about the petition, I just want to give you some facts. Legally, there's no obligation when a petition of this nature comes forward to hold a meeting based on RSA 18915. If a special meeting is held, the vote is advisory only, and the board has no obligation to implement the outcome of the vote, no matter which way it goes. And then finally, and this, I think, is the most important thing for your consideration, is that in order for a petition to be valid, according to RSA 195:13, there must be, and I'll just read directly from 195:13, receipt by the school board of a petition calling for such a meeting and setting forth the subject matter upon which action is desired, signed by at least 5% of the voters who are duly registered on the checklist of the district on the date the petition is submitted. And when looking at the petition and getting all of the updated information from each town office about our current population of people that are on the voter checklist, the petition fell short by 346 signatures. So I think that's probably as important as any of the other facts here. So I don't know if you want to discuss it, address it, vote on it.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Does the RSA only requires us to kind of take action and kind of recognize that if there's enough signatures? Or does it not? Do we have to recognize and take action even if there's not enough signatures?
No, you don't have to. Even if there were the appropriate number of signatures, you wouldn't have to take action.
But even so, if there's not enough signatures, then I don't see how, even if we wanted to approve it, it doesn't fit within the state law to even approve it. So I wouldn't see...
Well, that's why I'm bringing it forward, so we can have this discussion so that the public is aware.
Nancy?
Public input, you can. Any other comments? Okay.
I guess my only question, or you said that the intent was, or maybe Jessica, you said at the last meeting, the intent was that the mandate be ended permanently?
Perpetual.
In perpetuity?
Correct.
But I don't know if we, as a local board, have the authority to make such a, like, in the case of future pandemics, if that, you know, if the Department of Health and Services or Governor requires it, you know, I'm not sure if that's...
And our purview? Yeah.
Correct.
Well, we could establish, sorry, we could establish a policy of, you know, the board is going to do, or, well, the big, I think the question in front of us is whether or not we can accept a petition, have a special meeting, based on the petition, according to, and I assume Kathy, it's our town clerks that informed us, you know, based on how we compiled, and our school board clerk compiled everything and found out that they were short 346 signatures. So even if we wanted to have a vote of the public at a special meeting to implement a policy, that would stand when the state doesn't have any kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? The state could overrule the policy easily. But if the state's not taking any action, not enforcing any state policy or state law, then obviously, our policy would be the only thing on the books. But we can't even act on it, and we can't even have a special meeting because there's not enough signatures. So that's at least what I'm understanding.
Yep, that's correct.
Who did the voter checklist cross-referencing, was that Central Office staff?
Can you speak to...
Who did the cross-referencing of the voter checklist?
We didn't have to cross-reference it because it was short 346 signatures.
Oh, just overall?
Right.
So there wasn't even a cross-reference to make sure that everyone was registered?
Right. It doesn't, that didn't come from cross-referencing. Cross-referencing would be the next year.
And the burden of cross-referencing, is that on the district and our clerk? Or is it on, who's it on?
I really don't know. I'd have to find that out.
And if there were a vote, it would be at the cost of the taxpayers, right?
Yes.
Well, should we have a motion to recognize the over-evaluation that the petition is invalid?
You certainly can, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would move that we, based on the information from the superintendent, that the submitted petition was invalid, and therefore, there is no action.
Okay, that's a motion by Jim Pittman. Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Tim's going to second it.
Before, I know we would normally comment at this point. I'm assuming Jessica's name is on the petition.
I find it.
I would, I'd like to just hear what she has to say before we actually vote, since I think it's kind of pertinent to what we're doing. I understand the facts that have been presented by Kathy, but I'd still like to hear what Jessica has to say before we actually vote.
Give you three minutes.
Can I speak up? This feels a little close.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure how they work or whatever to go for.
So I have in my hands here, let me back up. You just made a motion to invalidate a petition. The petition, you claim to have fallen short of 346 votes. So that is an oversight on my behalf. We had a lot of people actually going against the voter rolls, making sure we had enough votes. So I bring to you tonight 946 more votes, more signatures, which should validate the petition. So now, you probably shouldn't vote to invalidate the petition because you can't really decide that until you go through these. So I'll give you Selinda, because she most likely is handling that. And I'm very happy to help you because we've actually gone ahead and done all the legwork to validate all of the signatures against the voter rolls. So we can share information if it would be helpful, and we have all of that information. So if it helps at all, let me know. But 946 more signatures right there. Thank you.
So I have some clarification questions.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I guess I have a question. Is the wording of the petition changed?
We can't change the wording of the petition. The petition does not state if it's in perpetuity or if it's in one moment.
Okay, but it was for it to eliminate the mask mandate.
Yes, which still exists because the state policy is still in effect.
Well, okay, that's, I'm not going to argue with you. This is, I'm giving you public input now, so we're not going to answer that.
Any other questions?
No.
Questions for the superintendent regarding the state RSA. Is there a duration requirement of when they need to have the signatures in by after they put in? Don't they need all the signatures when they put in their first petition? So I'm not sure how it would work if we could add these signatures to that, to my understanding of the state RSA. And I think, you know...
That's right.
They were getting them by the...
But it's based on the submission, when you give it to the board?
The form is submitted today.
The original submission of the petition was short by...
The law doesn't state anything regarding the date that they're submitted. So you can go ahead and look at it. The RSA does not state anything.
So I can read for you what the RSA says. "A meeting of every cooperative school district shall be held annually between the date set forth in RSA 197:1." Choice, oh, wait a minute, let me make sure I'm reading. Okay, yeah. "Raising and appropriating money for supportive schools for the fiscal year beginning in next July and for the transaction of other district business," which is what this would be. "Special meetings may be called by a majority of the vote of the school board. The special meeting shall be held within 30 days following the receipt of the school board petition, calling for such a meeting and setting forth the subject matter upon which action is desired, signed by at least 5% of the voters who are duly registered on the checklist of the district on the date the petition is submitted." And there's more, but...
Oh, so it is, so they have to have all the signatures on the date that the petition is submitted?
Questions?
So you, yeah, in order to make it that...
So we still can't by state law have it?
Correct.
Okay. So I think, I mean, I think with that, you know, I would encourage the petitioners to, I mean, they know where they got the signatures. I'd like the board to at least look at how we cross-check these because obviously, you know, the public isn't the one, they're not the ones with the burden to cross-check. It's us, so. And I assume they're going to bring forward another petition. It's their right. They can do it as many times as they choose to, but we have to follow the state law, to my understanding. And so I would suspect that we'll be expecting a petition at the next board meeting.
Oh, Brody, come on.
So, but I think...
So we don't really need to take any action on the petition that is, did not have enough signatures on it?
Well, we could say the current petition, that they didn't have enough signatures, we could take that vote. But I don't think it changes the fact that we're going to get signatures again for a new petition.
One point I'd like to make is that I appreciate what you're trying to do, Brody. However, the fact that, at least from the RSA, the fact that any vote, if we, first of all, we're not obligated to hold a meeting according to the RSA. And secondly, if we hold a meeting...
I can't hear you, Charlene. I'm trying to understand you. I'm so sorry.
So my understanding from the RSA is that we're not required to have a special meeting. Furthermore, my understanding from the RSA is that any vote would be advisory only. So I would be hesitant to encourage a whole lot of extra activity that is pretty much going to be moot at this point. So I also feel that, you know, everyone who has signed the petition, as well as us, need to be clear what the petition was for. And so my understanding, based on a presentation at our previous meeting or statements made, my understanding is that... Oh, I lost my pen, Bob.
I can read the wording in the petition if it's at all helpful.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, because the petition came in initially with very specific wording. And now, we're being told that the intent was not what was stated. And I think that gets us in trouble with the RSA as well. So the special meeting to act upon the following question. So here's the following question. "To see if the voters of the Governor Wentworth Regional School District will vote to adopt the following provisions pertaining to requirements to wear face coverings and within the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, A, the use of face covering shall be optional for all students at the sole discretion of their parent or guardian; and B, the use of face covering shall be optional for any employees and visitors on school district property and attending school district events. This article is not intended to and shall not be construed to raise or appropriate money or reduce or rescind any appropriation made at a previous meeting." So there's nothing that says it's in perpetuity. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Well, I think, but my larger point, Charlene, is, I mean, obviously, because the duration of the previous petition, that's expired. But obviously, they now know where they've gotten the signatures. And obviously, they can write a new petition and collect the new signatures where they know where they've gotten them from. And they can very well bring forward the petition again. And it's going to be, I'm not sure, we need to find out who the burden is to figure out, to cross-check the voter rolls, figure out if it's enough signatures of duly, duly, what's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, people on the, district voters, duly registered voters. That's the word I'm looking for, that are actually registered in the district and everything. So I think, I mean, there's, you know, obviously, we've kind of realized how within state law, we can't approve this, you know, this petition. But we should just be cognizant and prepared for another one to come and understand what the legal ramifications, well, not the legal ramifications, but what we have to do to figure out the cross-checking of it and who that burden is upon.
And I think that...
Sorry, go ahead.
I think that depends, Brody, on, once the petition comes forward, what you decide to do with it. Because at that point, you're going to want to decide whether you go forward with it and cross-check or whether you make a different decision.
And I really think that, it seems obvious to me since we were initially assured that there were 5% of signatures, that the number was 5%, and then through our, I think it was the Central Office, through our looking at the signatures and counting, we determined that that statement was false, that there were not 5%. So I think that, it seems to me that any petition that comes forward with an assertion of the correct number of signatures probably is going to need to be double-checked by the RSA.
That's my entire point. And, you know, and we have to figure out how we do that. You know, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I would make the motion to see what exactly our burden is, how we kind of...
Well, you can't have two motions at the same time, can you?
You can't have two motions at once. You can motion a table so we can table this motion to a future.
We don't need to get into all the technical stuff. There's a motion on the floor right now. Want to vote on that? If you want to withdraw that, you can withdraw that.
Can you reserve?
However you like to do.
Well, my personal opinion is that the original submission of the petition is invalid. And we should, as a board, recognize that as a matter of record.
Okay, so the petition on the, the motion on the floor is to, is to vote that the original petition was invalid due to lack of sufficient signatures? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on that motion? Okay, then all those in favor of that motion, that the petition was invalid due to lack of sufficient signatures, Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair Wozzai as well. Okay. Now, is there a reason to have another vote now before we have a...
We can address it when we get there.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
I think, if I could add one more comment, it's that, well, I appreciate that, you know, the next petition that will come, I imagine the language will be different, more honed. And I want to recognize, I personally received a lot of support for the mask mandate when it was in effect. And I'm recognizing that there are, you know, and I asked about the cost of such a vote to be put toward the voters, that that takes time and resources from each of the municipalities, correct? And paying all those people. And then the context, which is that it's a point right now, and garnering the public support to have a vote that is moot in context at taxpayer expense seems, I'm going to have a hard time getting behind that, I think. But I just, you know, I appreciate where you're coming from. I really do.
I appreciate it too. However, we live in a democracy.
Absolutely.
So I have to appreciate where everyone's coming from. You know, you know what I mean? That's where, you know, I appreciate, we are, the masks are off. And I just kind of have to appreciate, like, they're going through the painstaking process of getting the signatures and doing what they're doing. And they, the mistake happened, you know, kind of, I get it. You know, and, you know, I live in masks. I appreciate, again, the masks are off. But we're following the law. We're doing our things. But, you know, it just, we're doing the law, you know, and just sometimes mistakes are made. And just, I appreciate where they're coming from sometimes. That's all.
And then, I think we're ready to move on to the next item?
Yep.
Okay, the next item is, I just, this just came in not too long ago from our special ed director. There is a court case called Verrell versus, that's going to the Supreme Court. And I just want to tell you a very short snippet about... And I just wanna tell you a very short snippet about it, and then I'll provide you with the legal brief. The legal brief is from Jerry Zelen. What the, the law firm is looking for is for some school districts to sign on as friends of the court. Reason being that our area agencies have really been unable to fulfill, and, Brody, you've probably seen this and heard about this, or have really not been able to fulfill their obligations for children who qualify for services from them once they get to a certain age. And this has rendered some children homeless, and some really unfortunate things unfolding for kids once they turn 21 and they're no longer eligible for special education. And so, I, what I'd like to do is have you read the brief, and then maybe come back and talk about it at the next meeting. It would simply mean that we would sign on to the case, and the cost would be nominal, a maximum of $500. We're not gonna be involved in paying for the case, it's just showing support for it. So, I will make sure that you all get a copy.
Could I just ask a quick, um, the cost, $500 cost, what's the breakdown for that? Is that just a cost for our legal counsel to write?
Well, you know what, I, I think it's just a nominal fee, just to show that there is just a small financial commitment. It's just more of a show of commitment than anything else.
So, we're, we'd be paying to help with the court case?
Yes, yep, yep. And, and it, it might not even need to be $500, it might need to be just a, you know, small donation of some kind.
I'd just like to, and I assume it would be a donation from our, from our general fund?
Yes.
I'd just like to know, like, exactly what the cost would go towards and how much it would be, and if it's even required.
What is the court case, Verrell versus?
It's, it's, it's for services for students that have, have aged out of special education needs. But I don't, until you read the brief, you really don't know what the whole case is about.
No, she's gonna send that.
She's gonna send-
She's gonna send us it.
Yeah, please add to the agenda.
Right.
So, it's just, it's the kind of thing I think you just wanna read through and absorb, and then make a decision on what you think about it. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, under my report this week, I have, I have several items that, that have been brought up over the last couple of school board meetings. The first one basically is, is public input procedures. And we've gone through this over and over and over. The board, board meetings are really meetings for the board to carry out the district's business and to listen to the public for public input and for feedback. The public should not expect the board necessarily to answer questions from their public input. We take that public input, feedback to the board and take it under advisement so we can make decisions as a board, not as individuals. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if you don't get an answer, it's not because I don't wanna say something or somebody else doesn't wanna say something. If there's a question out there, we are going to discuss it as a board and make a board decision on, on an answer, not an individual decision. We are a board, not individuals. So, I just wanted to kind of clear that up. The, the second thing that I, I wanted to discuss, there was a question about posting the manifests on the website. And after a lot of discussion with the business administrator and others, there's literally hundreds and hundreds of pages that would have to be scanned in every time we sign the manifest. We are more than happy to make the manifests available to anybody that wants to see them within a period of time after our school board meeting. You don't have to have a 91A request, you can just call the SAU office, come in and see them. The manifests have to be filed properly for the auditors and all that, when they come in to audit the district. But anybody that wants to look at the manifest, you can call the office Tuesday morning. I say I'd like to come in Friday afternoon to look at them, we'll keep them unfiled until that point of time. But it's, the time consumption that would, it would take to try to scan all these documents and then upload them to the website would be a, a poor use of the time for the SAU office staff. But again, we're more than happy to make them available for anybody that would like to see them. They'll be at the SAU office, we can have them in the conference room, if you'd like to sit there and go through them individually. You can certainly do that. But it makes little sense to spend taxpayers' money paying people to scan these documents in and scan them in. It's a very, very time consuming process.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Is there anywhere to put on the website that procedure, just so people know?
Sure, sure, we can put the process, the, the procedure on-
You know, who to call and the availability of them, just so that people do go to the website, they can say, okay, this is how I can read the manifest.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think you had said last week about, at least, the total for that.
Yeah, the, the total, the totals, the total pages are, are kind of immaterial because the, the, what we sign doesn't have the totals on each. Sometimes it's a multiple pages that, that we're signing for more than signature. And that's the, and each page may have a total on it, but there could be, you know, 20, 30 pages within a packet that we're signing for all of those different totals.
No, no, the total dollar amount in the manifests that we-
We, we, we announce, we announce it, we, we announce it at the meeting, when we approve-
Posted in the minutes.
I think you mean after.
Yeah, just, I think it was, um-
Yeah, we could, we-
We discussed that we would also post it on the website, you know, probably with those directions about where to find the details.
We, we could certainly do that, post the, the totals like you gave me today. We can post that on the website along with the instructions on how, if you wanted to look at the detail behind it.
Would you, would you like a motion for that, or can we just give that?
No, I don't think we really need a motion on that, this is just a procedure that the, the business administrator can take care of.
Jack, the totals are in the minutes, so they're on the website.
Yeah, it seems very-
Well, that's right, the totals are already in the, it might, it might just be easier to, if you're gonna have the instructions on the website, it might be easier to just have, you know, approved at the meeting with the totals on it.
Yep, and the date of the meeting, absolutely. Because each month, it's another batch total.
Yeah.
Right, it's just a batch total, and, but if somebody wants to look at the batches, they can certainly contact the SAU office and-
And, and when you say batch total, it's literally the books that I bring and hand out to you all. Those are the manifests, multiple manifests.
Right.
Right, so, yep.
There's hundreds and hundreds of pages in there.
It's literally what I bring for signatures, yep.
Right, okay. And the, and the last thing is policy adoption. There was a question about never any public input on policy adoptions. And again, the public is invited, and every time, all the policies are reviewed by the academic affairs committee. The public is invited to attend any academic affairs committee that they'd like, to have, to listen to the discussions on any policies that we're looking to revise or to implement. There's also 381 pages, I think, of policies.
Five hundred and eighty-one.
Five hundred and eighty-one pages of policies that are on the website. And again, if anyone would like to go through those at some point and, you know, pick out a couple of policies that are outdated, that we don't need anymore, that need to be revised because of what's happened, you could pick that policy, the letters, letter code on that, send a note to the SAU office that you'd like that policy reviewed, and at the next academic affairs meeting, that policy can be brought forward. And again, for the public that's there to attend, they can go through that policy and understand what the concerns are.
And also, I'm not sure everyone understands the concept of first reading and second reading.
Right.
So that, you know, when we, when we present the policies at a board meeting for the first time, that's called a first reading. And then, you don't actually vote to adopt them until the following board meeting, which is called the second reading. So, there's usually, on average, a good, I would say, four weeks between board meetings to allow the, you know, public, um, public examination and, and comment.
Thank you, Charlene.
Excuse me?
That was not what happened, that was the point of speaking last week, that was not what happened when the pandemic policy was amended. It was not how it happened, I brought it up in a meeting, and then we all had a little special meeting that-
Okay, moving on, we have, well, publicly presented the interview. Okay, correspondence, this is our last board meeting. We sent expressions of sympathy to Sandy Moulton on the passing of her husband, and get, get well wishes for Paul Berry. He's recovered from surgery. And the last thing, New Hampshire School Board Association, if I could find my letter here. I kept saying, a new, a new national association has been created. As you know, New Hampshire withdrew from the National Association along with 23 other states at this point, and has established a new school board association. It's called the Consortium of State School Board Associations. Nobody seems to like the name of it, but that's what they're calling it. And it, it is very unique, the way it's being set up, because the National Association, as it is now, created a hierarchy of management. And like any political group out there, the larger you put in, the more power you get, the higher up you get into the chain of command. This particular organization is being set up on a rotation basis. So, every state organization will, at some point during their term of membership, have a president of the association, a vice president, a second vice president. Each, each state association will have their term in a rotation cycle to lead this organization. So, at some point, New Hampshire is a founding member. They will have the secretary, first vice president, second vice president, and president of the association in a rotation basis. Now, that means if the more school boards that sign on to this, it may be once every 15 years or something that you, you get into a cycle. But you're not gonna have the same leadership year after year after year that created all of the issues with the National Association. So, I, I'm excited that the New Hampshire and our board voted to, to join this new organization. I think they're on the right track and right path. And I think the National Association, to this day, has never called the executive director, Barrett Christine of New Hampshire, to express their concerns that New Hampshire withdrew. And that was quite, not, not a single phone call. And, and apparently, from what Barrett has told me, that there's many, many state associations that have not received a phone call either. So, there was a reason for the decline of membership. And I think this is a great opportunity for the school board associations to have a, a good, a good process behind it.
And then, under school boards association, Jack, we wanna get some dates for some training.
Yes, yes, we, we do have, we've been going around and around and around trying to get dates.
Since April.
The, the two dates were either the 9th, the 10th of May, we just knocked that out. So, I'd like to know, if we can, how many people are available on the 10th, the following day, for school board training?
Okay, I'm available.
Okay. It would really be great if we can get that under our, under our belt.
I wanna interrupt the date.
Go ahead.
I, I was wondering what the, the new consortium of state school boards association, if they would have, like, if there would be, like, a new founding mission or vision or purpose.
Yes, and, and as soon as, as soon as I, I get some more documentation from them, because it's still really in the organizational stage right now. I think they're having a meeting, I'm gonna say this, maybe next week, down in South Carolina, I think it is.
So, I can do that, yep. Well, no, I meant, like, I can do that, I can do, I can do that too, but, yeah.
And it's, it's, it's an organizational meeting to, to really get the bylaws approved and, and all that stuff. So, once that really gets done, we'll get full copies of that, and become, and we are members of that at this point, so, yeah. So, is there anybody that cannot make the 10th? 10th is the day.
Okay, all right. All right.
10th of the day at 5:30, correct?
Yep, I can do that.
Is that, where is it going to be?
May 10th, Fri-
Where?
5:30.
Where, where are we gonna hold it?
We're gonna hold it in the Plex, in the library.
In the Plex in the library.
Oh, in the Plex.
Because this is just, again, school board training, it's not a school board meeting, it's just-
Yeah.
School board training.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports, academic affairs.
We did not meet this evening, so we have nothing to report.
Okay, I know building and maintenance, Matt?
Yes, we sure did. We had a short meeting, but I've got a long report.
Okay.
So, sit back. So, we discussed the ESRS III grant update. And basically, it was presented back several months ago now, or a few months ago, and asked for community input. And we have gotten some community input on where those funds should be applied and spent. So, you should be seeing in the very near future, board meeting, a decision or a request for a decision on the, the final spending of that money. We also went over the capital improvement list, and that was for the 2021, 22 school year, what we, what we've currently got going on, '22, '23, and of course, beyond. Those projects range anywhere from, from little projects that can be done in-house, right up to the big projects. Sorry, no new schools being built, sorry. So, we also briefly touched on a couple of projects that had come forward that were not on the actual list at this point, one of which is the lighting on the alumni field. And also, the possibility of looking at funding for the locker room at-
Pop Weyland.
Pop Weyland, there we go. Just wanted to call it out and ask you. So, those projects may come forward further on down the line, depending on how funding plays out. And, or it may go to the votus as a warrant article. We also, back, gee, probably almost a year ago, we discussed putting a plaque up at the Sola field, at the, at the Effingham School. And I know you guys didn't get it in your board, but it, it's in your packets. But basically, it's an informational plaque that'll be going up, so that if somebody not familiar with Sola will be able to go to this informational plaque and be able to kind of see what's going on and where that power's coming from and how it's getting applied to our school. So, that'll be coming down, do we need to vote on that?
No.
That's, okay. And that is, that's it.
Okay.
Do you have some questions?
Yeah.
There, I'm not who I'm voting, but I know there was a lot of signs that I saw, that I'd heard about both yes or no on Pop Weyland. Something, I'm not sure who holds the responsibility for Pop Weyland, or is it-
It's the town of Wolfboro.
No, it's town of Wolfboro.
And so, you had said about locker rooms at Pop Weyland, and I guess I'm not understanding where.
So, basically, if I understand it correctly, there, the votus of Wolfboro chose to rebuild the building and do some expansion and what have you. In that, they're allowing space for Brewster and Kingswood, because we play hockey there, girls and boys, and lacrosse practice there, and I guess some other teams. They are allowing, if we fund for it, one of the locker rooms to be opened with the Kingswood stuff.
Yeah, but how much, like, so what, what are we paying for? Yeah, but how much, like, so what, what are we paying for?
So.
So I just, I, well, I just wanna make sure, um, so I'm not, I, I just wanna, I mean, so taxpayers' money, so I, I just wanna be fair and equitable here, so.
Tim, do you want me to?
I just, I, I just really, I mean, just because, I just really wanna be mindful of that.
Kathy's got some, Kathy has.
I can explain that.
Okay.
Um, Kathy Oblennis, the high school principal, Linda Murray.
Mm-hmm.
And Victor met so that they could inform the district of the plans that the voters approved, and as part of the plans that the voters approved, there was a section of Pop Whalen for locker rooms for Brewster, a section for locker rooms for the town, and a section for locker rooms for Governor Wentworth, girls and boys each. So they're, obviously, they're coming to us for money to, to make this happen, and those locker rooms would be Governor Wentworth's, our Kingswood locker rooms. The cost is a lot, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. However, before we get to that stage, the finance committee needs to review that and make a decision about how, whether or not to bring it forward to be supported and how to bring it forward.
Yeah, but, okay, I'm, I'm gonna stop, I'm, let me, but like, that's part of, like, Kingswood's sports budget, right? That's a sport, no, let me, let me, let me speak.
All right, sorry, I thought it was a question.
No, well, it is. So that, that's a sports budget, that's, I would say, that's a Kingswood regional hockey sports line budget. And I would say that that was never mentioned as a line item when I see a sports line budget as hockey.
Well, there's, there's no, there's nothing in the budget now because there.
It hasn't been approved.
It hasn't been approved.
Right, it just.
They just came to us and asked for it, nothing has happened, nothing they asked.
Yeah, but I'm saying, like, but it's kind of approved already.
No, it's not.
No, it's not, they're not us.
They, they approve, they approve the, the remodeling and the addition to the building itself.
Okay, so then if we say no.
If they say no, then.
Then they're gonna have to go up for capital funds.
They're gonna have to build the locker room themselves, we won't have our name on it.
So we, okay, so then they would have to go.
They're gonna build the locker room for the most part, either way.
Right, so, but then.
So part of the plans was to ask and to give first offer to our, to our school district and to Brewster, traditionally always use those locker rooms.
Right.
And so they're offering us, if we invest in this project, to be able to let our students and the coaches at these locker rooms designated to them to not even be shared with the public anymore, currently we have to share some of them, be just our students and just our coaching staff.
Right, so it's kind of like.
Well, the other thing too, though, is it's not just for hockey, this new facility that was built.
All right.
It is going to be a year-round facility, and so any sports.
So it's like a capital ask, kind of.
That's exactly what it is.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to ask, bro.
Right, right, but it hasn't.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
But it hasn't been presented for.
Right, right, so that's what I'm just saying, so it's like a capital ask, it's like a gift, a bequest, so it'd be more of like a naming opportunity, perhaps.
That was never brought up, but I had a meeting with.
Well, I'm just trying to figure it out, that's all, I'm just, like, when I hear, I'm just trying to figure it out, that's all.
So there are a lot of different ways it could happen, Wendy, it doesn't necessarily need that part.
Yeah, right, but, right, right, it could be, yeah, kind of like the NIC type of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's all. All right, sorry, Tim, keep going.
Okay.
No, I'm done.
All right.
Okay, all right, um, I have nothing for finance and human resources tonight, um, we have, we have more stuff to discuss in non-public after this meeting. Advanced planning, you can see all of the items down below, uh, May, May ninth is now the board meeting, um, as you heard earlier in the meeting, uh, and all the other activities that are going on between now and, um, our meeting in June, so we've got a lot, a lot going on. Okay, public input.
Jeff?
Yes.
Could we, I think there are other concerts happening, um, just could we add those to, or just to the record?
What, what will happen, Stephanie, is you'll get a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
That'll have everything on it, so you can sign up for whatever you're going to, and then.
Yeah.
Those additional concerts will appear on this, in the next.
Great, thank you.
Okay, public input.
I have a couple things here, Jessica Williams, Wolfboro, um, one, first thing is graduation. Friday night graduation is really difficult for a lot of families, especially working families who can't get out of work, who have to miss out on hours if they leave work early. Um, is it possible at all that we could say graduation's Septem, uh, Saturday the eleventh? I mean, I've talked to some of the kids too about that, and they also don't like the idea of a Friday night graduation, so they're in my house all the time, I get to talk to these, these seniors, and they like the idea of a Saturday graduation, so it gives families time to come into town, get settled in, um, I know we have a big crew coming from Rhode Island, so it'll be easier for us, um, but it's not about me, so, but it was about the kids, my graduation was on the Saturday, and it was nice to have lunch and not anything really late at night, so, just my public comments about graduation. Also, I want to thank, um, some of you that are willing to speak up, and I will remind you, we need you here at meetings to speak and share your opinion, it's important that you show up, um, I appreciate that everyone shows up here. Um, I also appreciate that the board is maybe trying to follow the law, and I don't know the definition of receipt of a meeting, I think that's something to find out, what is the definition of receipt, laws are made up of words, as we know, and so we'll look into that. For now, I really thought the petition was a great way to start to have a conversation, and I think it's important that we all have conversations, be willing to have conversations about things that the public may disagree on, and I appreciate that Wendy was willing to say, you know, she may not agree with what we're doing, and that's fine, um, I respect that, but this is the process. I would like transparency, and I have asked the board to provide the manifest, and I realize that it may be a, a burden to put all of that online, so I respect that, I didn't realize that you had a binder, um, every single month, you probably have more of them, so, what, you, you have to answer the question?
And that's just the manifest, that's not the invoice of at all.
Right, that seems excessive, um, to, as an initial first look, um, but, so, if you can't answer, that's okay, um, but we could go to the SAU office and we can copy this information, or we can review the information.
You'd have to pay for copies, obviously, and there's hundreds of pages.
But what if we brought around a scanner, and we just scanned it? No, no copying required, is that?
Public input.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna, if you wanna per, personally, I mean, it's gonna take hours, it's up to you, I mean, it's perfectly up to you.
I've got thousands of signatures, so I got it.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Or I get someone else to do it. I guess my, my last ask today, um, is, oh, more ESTER funds, those, those are not in part of the general budget, do you keep that accounted for separately, and is that something that is accessible to the public as well, to see how those funds have been spent so far?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All righty, and I guess the last thing is I'm gonna ask the board, since, um, we have people here that are, uh, lawyers and judges and also public health experts, um, so Kathy was kind enough to let us know that the book was closed on COVID at the last meeting, so, um, I would ask that the board maybe, if that is the case, um, maybe the stay open plan should be, um, rescinded if the case is closed on COVID, so, our school, our superintendent informed us of that last meeting. So I'll ask that you maybe consider that, um, that the stay open plan is removed until further notice, until it's needed again, possibly in November.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here to fol, I'm Dan Batten from OSBE, by the way.
What's your last name, Dan? I'm sorry, I think.
Batten.
Ben, thank you.
I'm here to follow up with the notice that you were served at the school board meeting, um, the fifteenth of February at Kingswood Arts Center. A notice of maladministration that you were served quoted several constitutional articles and clearly showed where and from whom power is derived in our constitutional republic. Uh, because this board chose to ignore that legal, that legal notice, I'm going to provide some further education about the Constitution, the common law, the people's rights, and your sworn oath. Thus, I'm providing instruction on your role as agents of the people, as is my reserved right in the New Hampshire Constitution Bill of Rights, Article thirty-two. Uh, but first, I'd like to quote from Lysander Spooner, in his work titled Trial by Jury, quote, "Any government that is its own judge of and determines authoritatively for the people, what are its own powers over the people, is an absolute government, of course. It has all the powers that it chooses to exercise, there is no other, or at least any more accurate, definition of despotism than this. On the other hand, any people that judge of and determine authoritatively for the government, what are their own liberties against the government, of course retain all the liberties they wish to enjoy. And this is freedom, at least it is freedom to them, although it may be theoretically imperfect, it nevertheless corresponds to their highest notion of freedom. And I'd like to point out that it does not matter what side of the political aisle you sit on, to be able to regard that statement as absolute truth. Both the left and the right have the tools they need to institute fair, moral, and humane government, inscribed in the timeless documents that we call our constitutions, so that no one person or group can have any of their own personal liberties taken away by any other. And yet, that is exactly what has happened in New Hampshire and across the country by school boards, department commissioners, and all the way up to heads of state. The common law, steeped in several hundred years of jurisprudence, deserves our attention and utmost respect. The common law is the foundation of all law, it is our divine birthright, which transcends party politics, and it guides us and will unite us in this era of division. It's also important to note that the words in the people's constitutions were chosen very carefully. The authors of our several state constitutions lived under a tyrannical monarchy. They expressed, no, sorry, they experienced in their lifetime a form of despotism that is well recorded in our history books. In writing these constitutions, they gave the people instruction manuals on how good government is to perform the work of being their agents and representatives. Constitutions were written expressly to protect the rights of the people and provide clear instructions on how government in our republic is to operate. When government operates outside of that framework, it becomes despotic and commits treason against the people they swore to protect. So with that, we'll begin with the New Hampshire Constitution Bill of Rights, Article one. Quote, "All men are born equally free and independent, therefore all government of right originates from the people, is founded in consent, and instituted for the general good," end quote. That language is clear enough. All men, which of course does not just mean men, it includes all people of legal age, are equally free, government originates from these people with their consent, and only their consent. And since I have five, only five minutes, I don't have time to read the whole constitution to you, or I would, but much more of it is described in the notice that you received. I'm gonna highlight two more articles, though, before concluding. Article thirty-two says, quote, "The people have a right in an orderly and peaceable manner to resemble and consult upon the common good, give instructions to their representatives, and to request of the legislative body by way of petition or remonstrance redress of the wrongs done them and of the grievances they suffer," end quote. The part that I'd like to reiterate says, "The people have a right to assemble and give instructions to their representatives," and that's you, our elected representatives. You, in your official capacity while sitting on this board, are our agents. When one of the people comes before you and shows you where their rights have been violated, it is your sworn duty to provide remedy. Agent, as defined by Black's Law Dictionary, is, quote, "A person authorized by another to act for him, one instructed with another's business," end quote. Further, there's a maximum of law regarding agency from Wiseman's Maxims of Law four D, quote, "An agent is a person authorized by another to act on his account and under his control," end quote.
Can you just wrap it up, please?
All right, I've got about two more minutes.
You, you will over five minutes, eh?
Am I?
Yes.
All right, all right, I'll skip the next part, just let me.
Is there anybody else that was wanting to speak up?
Uh, Wendy, uh, I mean, Stephanie.
I'll, I'll just skip to my conclusion. Uh, the people hold all political power, as stated in Article eight, which reads, "All power residing originally in and being derived from the people. All magistrates and officers of government are their substitutes and agents, and at all times accountable to them. Take notice that I object to any elected person or government employee that claims to have any authority to suspend the Constitution or force me to surrender my inalienable rights." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, no one else, uh, we need to go into non-public, so I'd ask for a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one A, uh, colon three, paragraph two, for personnel matters.
Thank you for the motion.
Motion by Brody. A second by Stephanie, uh, by who?
Dana.
By Dana? Okay. All right, all in favor, Brody?
Oh, I.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Tim Pittman?
Yes.
Uh, Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we are in non-public, thank you.